Welcome. This is the September 17th meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, September 21st, 2018. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, September 21st, 2018, the date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, October 7th, 2018. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. I'd like to welcome Tom Wolfher back to our meeting tonight. He's been absent for a few months and we're very happy to have you back.
Thank you, Dave.
Also, voting tonight is Mr. Carmody, Mr. Wolfher, Mrs. Tata, Mr. Rice, and myself. The first application, oh, if anybody's here, for application 18-023 for Paradise Hills Winery, that has been withdrawn, and also, application 18-020, 9 Woodley Court, that has been withdrawn. So, the first application we're going to hear is 18-017, variance request from Harvest Park Associates LLC for an outside storage of dumpster in front yard at 101 North Plains Industrial Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks to locate dumpsters in front yard where dumpsters must be located in rear or side yards only. Parcel is a rear lot with single access to six associated commercial buildings and parking facilities in an I-40 district. Lot shape in combination with configuration of the six buildings causes Buildings 2 and 5 to identify dumpster location in side yard where zoning regulations identify same yard to be a front yard. This office can support the location of dumpsters in the front yard of Buildings 2 and 5 as long as all other requirements of Section 6.12E of the zoning regulations such as full screening from any street or any other property are provided. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lockland Fitzgerald. My office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and property owner. If I may, I'm going to do the presentation by pointing to the board, but I do have some photographs that I would like to pass first.
Certainly.
This is the site plan that I believe that was, provided you with the application. This is North Plains Industrial Road. This is the accessway. As Ms. Torrey pointed out, there are six commercial buildings located on the property and they all share this common accessway. When this property was developed back in the 1980s, it was designed in such a way that the parking and the primary entrances to most of the units was done through the center. You know, sort of think of sort of like a village development where your concentration is here, and the loading docks and the, you know, the rear entrances were on this side and this side. And it's operated this way for 30 years, and no issues, but apparently recently, we've come to realize that technically, this is the front yard. And Buildings 2 and Buildings 5, if you look at the photographs, you'll see, I think it's on the lap, the three photographs that I gave you, you can see that the dumpsters are located behind the buildings, and that technically is in the front yard, and that's prohibited under the regulations. So, the only way we could think of to resolve this issue was to come in and apply to the, this board for a variance to recognize the fact that it was approved this way. I don't think anybody thought about it in terms of, you know, this was technically the front yard, and has operated this way for 30 years without incident. I think that the comments from Ms. Torrey indicate that there haven't been any, it doesn't appear that the planning office has any major objections to it. The first picture I provided you with is a copy of the existing screening. This is along North Plains Industrial Road, so there is a substantial existing screening between what the public sees and the back of those buildings. The second picture, just so you realize, is the, this area here, the front where the parking areas, and as I said, the last photograph is just showing you the gravel driveway that's shown here and where those dumpsters are located. That's it. Just, if you have any questions, I'm obviously happy to answer them.
Joan, are you proposing any fencing them in?
At this point, no, but we do understand that any approval would be subject to whatever screening requirements. The regulations do recognize that the existence of mature, healthy vegetation could constitute a screening, but my client does understand that if you approve the location of the dumpsters, they'll be dealing with the planning office in terms of what needs to be done for screening.
So, where are you proposing putting, I mean, because in the pictures and what it looks like to me here is that without any defined fenced-in area to keep the dumpsters, they can end up anywhere in that front yard, rear yard, and I understand what your problem is. So, my question is, because they're strewn all along there, how many do you need? Because there's quite a few as you look in the picture.
My understanding, and again, is that the tenants are responsible for their own trash removal. So, if you have, for example, one tenant for an entire building, I'm presuming they can get away, most people can get away with one dumpster. We all understand that there are some businesses that would need more than one, but I think there are multiple tenants and a couple of, I don't know if in both buildings, but at least in this building, I think that there's multiple tenants so that you're seeing more than one.
I'm seeing four.
Yeah. I would not dispute that from what I saw too.
But I also know that the garbage trucks have to have access to them.
That's correct.
So, have you or your client come up with an area where you want to put them?
Um, I, Casey, I don't know whether you've participated in any discussions, but I'm not aware of any specific discussion about relocating the dumpsters to a one area. I think the only issue has been, how are we going to screen the dumpsters that are placed there?
Go ahead, Casey. What do you?
Well, I think what would be, my understanding in talking to Amy was that there was some discussion about having the dumpsters, having a proposal for the screening for the dumpsters. So, I think it would be helpful for us and probably for the board and for the purposes of the approval if we had a defined, like, okay, here's the area where the dumpsters are going to go. I mean, that could be, presumably it would be all along Buildings 5 and Building 2, within a certain, you know, maybe 10 feet off the buildings or whatever, because that's kind of how they are. But I think it would be helpful for us to know exactly what you're proposing for screening, because I, I'm a little concerned about us walking away tonight with like a sort of a vague understanding of what is going to, what is going to happen in terms of screening. So, I think it would be helpful if we sort of defined what the screening was going to be.
I would love to be able to answer that question, but in my discussions with Amy, that specific question was not raised with me, so I did not raise it with the client. We just understood, or expected, let me put it to you like that, that if the board approved it, it would be subject to the recommended condition that Amy had said, that the screening would have to be in compliance with the regulations. If you're uncomfortable with that as a, as the condition, because then it would have to come, I'm presuming there would have to be discussions with your office, and I don't know whether or not, let us just say hypothetically, a central location was created, whether that constitutes a modification of the site plan and then would require some review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out the options here.
I'm not suggesting, I don't think we have any objection to you putting the dumpsters where, where they are, so to speak. I mean, but this, they are visible when you drive by, and so, I just don't want us to kind of walk away tonight with, where the board thinks they've approved something and then we don't really have a clear resolution about what's happening next. You know, where we sort of have this gray area where we don't actually, my understanding from talking to Amy was that there was a discussion that, yes, there would be screening. So, that's why I just, if we don't know what that is, that's what I'm a little bit uncomfortable with.
And again, I didn't know I was going to get asked that, and I apologize to the board, you know. I just thought the condition that it would be compliance screening would be adequate.
And I think for me, myself, and I'll open it up to the rest of the commissioners, is that I would like to know where you're proposing to put them, what kind of screening. In the past, we've required fencing with possibly some sort of on two sides or three sides, depending with some greenery of some sort, but I see your issue here and I'm looking at ease of access for the pickup and everything, but at the same time, I mean, right now, they're just throwing about the driveway. So, I mean, I would, before I could make a decision, and I, like I said, open it up to everybody else once we're done, is, is some sort of design and, you know, suggestion of where you're going to put them.
And obviously, I can't do that, so if that's the board's preference, you know, I'm presuming that this could be continued again with the consent of the applicant. But I, I'm just coming into this, so I...
I think, yeah, I mean, I think maybe we would want to, or you might want to look to the board for some input in terms of what they might be looking for in order to be, have a higher comfort level with the variance. So, would, would they be looking for fencing? Would they be looking for bushes or some combination? What type of fencing? So, maybe that's a good conversation to have, and then maybe we can come back next month with an actual proposal for them.
That's, again, I think Ms. Hannah's excellent.
I mean, fencing or some sort of, because of where it is, maybe you're going to have to do a row of arborvitae's and maybe try and block it off somehow, get creative, because I do realize the trucks have to have access, and that looks narrow where they won't be able to make the swing in, you know, to get them, if they were close up to the building, it'd be a different story, but the way that looks, at least at this part, but I'll open it up. Anybody got any questions? Ray?
Well, I was going to make a comment about, many years ago, I worked in that facility. Okay? And, and if you take a look at the way the dumpsters are placed, they're almost placed in the road itself, and I understand that makes it easier for the trucks' access to pick them up. However, I think continuity-wise, as we had them, they were, if you take a look at the overhead doors, you have green there to the right of the driveways, like, generally, the dumpsters were placed up there closer to the building, and you had an open access to that road, and there was enough turn for the garbage trucks to get in there and pick it up. The way I look at this right now, it looks like mishmash. I mean, just awful looking. I think that if you can get those up closer to the building, even if they had to put in another track, like trap rock or something, so that they could lay the dumpsters on and perhaps do some coverage with fencing or arborvitae's, that would be a little more acceptable.
Anybody else? Christine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, how, how did this come about? Was there a complaint because somebody could see them, or it?
I don't have, maybe somebody drove by and asked a question. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. It was a complaint.
Okay. So, in that case, I would just, it sounds like we'll probably can, possibly continue this until next month, but I'm just looking at the regulation, and it simply says, shall be screened from any street line or other property line by means of walls, fences, buildings, or evergreen trees and shrubs. And, I mean, most of the trees are already there, so all I would really be looking for is, you know, maybe it was mentioned like arborvitae's, just something so it can't be seen from the street would be helpful, and then you would, you would be in compliance with that section, at least, but I don't have a problem with where they are because of the, the property, but just maybe a little, few more trees there just to block it from the street would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Carmody?
I actually have the same question, but can you just remind me, I mean, this plan was approved 30 years ago as it is today?
Yes.
And so, nothing has changed from when it was approved?
No.
By the town?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
But if I could just add to that, it didn't show any dumpsters, that plan, right?
I'm not saying...
No, I just want to clarify, like, the dumpsters weren't, it's not like we've always, we've vetted that, so to speak, right? Is that correct?
I didn't do the actual approval, but it wouldn't surprise me to find out this is an as-built and it doesn't show the dumpsters, and I think in the past, I don't think we were as careful to make sure we showed everything.
Yeah, agreed.
But yet, it was built, it got COs, it's been operating with that, so maybe it wasn't formally on the plan, and sort of there was a de facto approval and that nobody came down until just recently. And again, we want to get into compliance. We're not trying to, you know, not be in compliance. These are just oversights that sometimes happen.
I mean, it, I, maybe per building, you would have one area, am I just throwing it out there? One area for all the dumpsters to be might be the easiest thing for you guys, and easiest for the trucks? I don't know. So, any more questions? Mr. Wolf?
Joan, has your client indicated what size dumpster that they plan to put there? Is it a conventional one? Is it an open dumpster, or is it a compactor where?
As far as I know, again, each of the tenants do it, and I believe it's a typical roll-off dumpster, and different sizes depending on the business and what their needs are. So, you could have a 10-yard dumpster, you could have a 20-yard dumpster. Just looking here, there's one that looks like it's a pretty good size, and the other ones look more like 10-yard dumpsters.
Right. So, if you could add that to your questions?
Details, or at least build in some flexibility, because again, if it's, if it's tenant-dependent, we'll have to create some flexibility for the size.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Understood. So, do you want to continue this the next month?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the board feels more comfortable, certainly, I'm not going to ask you to vote if you don't, like, have the information, because I'm not going to like the results, so.
But, but also, your client has to come up with a site plan that he feels that the dumpsters can, and that's something that we can approve.
Yeah. Okay. And then, to the extent, if a consent is necessary, and I suspect it might be, I can get you a written letter to the fact, but at least for the record, you know, we're consenting to the continue. Thank you.
Do I, can I get a motion for continuous the next month?
Make a motion that we continue this next month?
Second.
Motion to approve continuing this application till October. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve, yes, to continue.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzek?
Yes. So, we'll see you next month. Okay, next application, 18-024, variance request for Bergansy, sorry, for a side yard setback of 15 feet and a building coverage of 20% to construct a front porch at 22 Bailey Avenue. I don't know how bad I...
Bergansy.
Bergansy. Please state your name and address for the record. Hold the microphone closer to you, please.
My name is Walter Bergansy, 22 Bailey Avenue.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have staff notes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Applicant requests side yard of 15 feet where 14 feet exists and 20 feet is required. Building coverage of 20% where 15% maximum is permitted and, is it 19.2% exists, to construct a 10-foot by 8-foot covered porch at 22 Bailey Avenue in an R-18 district. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Please explain your application.
Well, we have a man hardship because of our, how big our lot is, and with, my wife and I have always wanted to put a front porch on, so we decided to see if we could do it now, and it would be helpful for us in a sense of weather, snow, rain, to have some cover to go in and out of the house.
Okay. Is there a porch there now?
No.
There's nothing there?
Just, just steps.
Just steps?
Yes.
And you're going to cover it just, so you'd have a covered porch for the, keep out of the weather?
Yes.
Is there, anybody got any questions for the applicant? Casey, you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. If you notice, there was a variance approved previously for the house because the lot's already undersized. It was a reconstruction of a previous house, so it is an undersized lot, and there is sort of an odd angle of the lot, so it kind of, as you go, it sort of skews to impact what they can do there. And then, the other sort of unusual situation here is, there is a paper road, Mountain View Road, next to that. Across the street on Bailey Avenue, Mountain View Road is a, is a built road, but there it is not, so it doesn't have the same impact as if there were a neighbor there. It's just an unconstructed paper road.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, part of the house is already sticking out, so that porch would be, not flush with it, it would be a little bit under. I don't know if you can see where the, the house is extended out, where it says 14 feet, and the porch will be right almost in line with it.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody'd like to speak against this application? Do you have any further to add before I?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for possible discussion and action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to approve application number 18-024.
Second.
Motion to approve this application. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzek?
Yes. Your application's been approved. Thank you. You're welcome. Next up is application 18-025, variance request from Penn Highway Holding Company for no front yard, front landscaping and no parking perimeter landscaping to expand vehicle storage area at 11 to 17 Penn Highway. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks to expand vehicle storage area at 11 through 17 Penn Highway in an I-40 district, which requires full site compliance with all applicable zoning regulations, including required landscaping. Location of buildings and existing parking lot predates zoning. Parcel currently has no front or parking lot landscaping and abuts the railroad to the east. Buildings are oriented within the front setback, reducing, eliminating, locating front yard landscaping. Parcel boundary contiguous to the railroad has, has no setback requirement. Applicant proposes to allow current zero landscaping to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Good evening, again, for the record. My name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lockland Fitzgerald. My office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Penn Highway Holding Company, who is the applicant. The applicant is seeking to construct in addition to one of the existing buildings on the property to allow indoor vehicle storage. As the applicant is seeking to modify a structure on the parcel, the property is required to be brought into compliance with the current zoning regulations. As noted in Ms. Torrey's comments, the locations of the buildings and the parking area predates zoning. In addition, this parcel was developed and expanded prior to Penn Highway becoming a public road, so there was, at that time, no applicable setbacks or landscaping standards. The property does abut the railroad line on the east and to the west, and behind it, it is property owned by Infra Metals Company, which I'm sure you're familiar, is a steel manufacturing facility located on Penn Highway. Due to the proximity of the buildings to the now street line and the existing parking, there is insufficient area in which to install the required front landscaping. The majority of the parking spots are needed to comply with the, to comply with the zoning regulations, which require a total six spaces, I think it is, for each repair bay. Most of the vehicles will be stored to the rear of the property while they're awaiting repairs for service. Most of the customer activity actually will occur in the front of the buildings. There are no adjacent neighbors who will be impacted by the lack of parking landscaping because you've got the railroad, and then you've got Infra Metals, and if you look at the plan, you can see there's a topography difference of about 10 feet between this property and where the buildings are on the Infra Metals. So, nobody's really going to see it. So, happy to answer your questions.
So, the proposed additions in the rear of the body shop?
Yeah, I can show you.
Yep.
Proposed addition is back here.
Correct. Well, on the back of that building, correct? The shaded area in the back, right?
Yep.
So, there's no way you could give us any type of greenery in the front up against the building, or?
Well, there is. If you look at here, you can see what is sort of like a, it's actually concrete block, sort of like a decorative block, and there actually is some landscaping in there, but that's the extent of the landscaping that's on the site. And because of people pulling in and the parking, you know, to do the pull-ins, there really isn't anywhere to put any effective landscaping.
I mean, even if we did put some curb cuts in, because that is all, there is no curb there. That's just all entrance.
That's absolutely right, that, you know, again, because a lot of this property was developed prior, matter of fact, I believe it was one of the approvals that the property owner obtained, the town required them to deed their frontage to the town so they could make Penn Highway a legal road, which they did, but...
Casey, do you have any history on this that you could shed some light on what were?
Yeah, there is a lot of history on this, and when Attorney Malloy and the surveyor for the property came in, we kind of hashed through the, I mean, you see on there that it references several various, several permits that were approved over time for the different uses, and then there are several other approvals that have occurred over time, and there are a lot of different conditions with these approvals, some of which have been complied with and some of which haven't, but that's something that'll get hashed out when they go through planning and zoning for their special permit. There was previously, or one, some of the previous plans do show actual driveways, and there was a condition, one of the conditions of approval over time referenced the installation of curbing, although it's not entirely clear what exactly what was supposed to happen there. So, the other thing is, sort of to comment on, just two things for your information, this was to... um, sort of to comment on, um, just two things for your information. Uh, this was two separate pieces. It's since been merged into one, so now all the permits kind of live together. Um, the other thing is, we have approved over time, um, particularly for the building that the addition is proposed on to additions over time. But they have always been for storage of vehicles rather than for an expansion of the repair component. So, it was, okay, we're just gonna store vehicles in there. We're not gonna make it part of the repairs. Um, this addition, so it didn't have to go back for a new special permit. It was just an addition, like basic site review. Um, with this addition, my understanding is that, um, that would be storage, but the repair in the existing building would expand into a part that was storaged before. So, there'll be an expansion of the repairs. So, that sort of opens it up to the new special permit where all the new requirements come into play. Now, obviously, these buildings have all been here a long time. It wouldn't make sense to, I mean, it would be impossible to bring everything entirely into compliance. So, I think what we're hoping for is to, um, clean up the front area and to get some landscaping up front where it's possible. Uh, so I think in the back, um, it kind of is what it is. I mean, there is plenty of room back there, but, um, it's vehicle storage in the back. I, I do think that in the front, um, I think I see some places where there might be some room for some landscaping. There's the area, um, if you've been by the property, there's the area that's fenced in, in front of the, um, the building to the...
Number 11?
Yes. Um, that's fenced in and kind of overgrown and has some, um, what appear to be vehicles that have been sitting there for quite some time. Um, I think that could be turned, it's, it's kind of a landscape, I mean, it's kind of overgrown now, so, um, and then I think, uh, some of the parking, um, perhaps rather than being provided, you know, some of the parking to the west of number 17, um, perhaps, like those four spaces could be put, again, elsewhere on the property. That could be, potentially become some green or down at the very end. So, there's that little parking area down at the very end of 17. Um, again, I think, um, as, as the chairman sort of alluded to, there's no reason you couldn't create a driveway there and have like a nice little landscaped island at the end. Like I said, I don't think we're expecting full compliance here, but I think this, there's an opportunity and an expectation here to, now that we're doing something here, to bring it a little further towards compliance. So, that's, that's kind of what we're looking for. So, I, I would be happy to talk further with the applicant and to meet further with the applicant if they have some ideas they want to bounce, you know, bounce around or, um, so that would be sort of the direction I would, I would recommend, um, if the commission's inclined to look for that. But, um, that's, that's our position.
I also do know there's probably a great problem, because that front yard there is pretty flat. So, um, to be, I mean, I did say something about curb cuts, but after I thought about what I said, it's, thinking about the property, it is pretty flat there, so to be putting curbing in is probably gonna be more of a hindrance trapping water than, um, any help. But maybe some planters are on the side of the building, um, would be something I would be happy with, along with cleaning up in front of 11 in that fenced-in area. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Rice?
Uh, observation more than question. Uh, the last building, uh, you got number 11, you got number, the last building on the left?
17?
17.
17. Uh, I believe, uh, Casey made mention of some spaces over to the left that could be eliminated. However, uh, I know handicap is required. Uh, isn't it possible for the handicap to be removed from the front of the building and be placed where those four spaces are to the left of the building? That way you could put some nice foliage in front there.
Yeah, I think that's an option or to, um, put them, and obviously, we want to keep those in a place that's, um, most convenient for people that are, that are in a wheelchair or, um, otherwise need access, easy access. Um, but there might be an option to put it over, to put them over on the other side as well. Um, or again, if they were to stay, maybe some of those other spaces become...
I mean, I don't want to do something if it's against, um, ADA or anything like that, but, uh, I don't know, where was the actual entrance to that building where the handicap is right now?
Right in front, I believe.
If you, if you look between the two handicap chairs, it says there's a three-foot entrance. So, that's the entrance to the building. And if you look to either side, that's where there is the, um, the pavers, for lack of a better term, which go along the outside of the building. And that's where all the existing plantings are.
Would you...
But...
Sorry, Ray.
To your, to your point...
I'm, I'm...
Sorry. To your, to your point, there are two, um, wheelchair, wheelchair accessible spaces or handicap accessible spaces. There are also two regular spaces up there. So, maybe those could be modified or turned into some sort of landscaping or kind of played into that land.
Would you be open to planter up against the building around the side with some greenery? Would help, in my eyes. I mean, I, I realize with the way the building is and the way the grade is and just the design of the property, it's gonna be kind of hard to, um, but I'm, the way I'm looking at it is if we had some more planter right around, like you have around the front, around the side of the building in front where the cars park on the west side, would give, give us something. Um, and then also the issue with number 11 in that fenced-in area. But I'll open it up. Has anybody else got any questions? Casey, you look like you have...
No, I was just gonna say, you can also use the islands to direct your drainage appropriately. I mean, depending on where you put them. So, if the drainage is already kind of going, I mean, it wouldn't make sense if we just put a curb, but if there's something actually kind of creating a curb cut where we're directing the water appropriately, that might be manageable. Let's see what the applicant offers.
I'm not the engineer, so I don't, all I know is water wants to go downhill.
I, I do know this, like I said, it's pretty flat there. And, um, there is no, I'm gonna say no curb line. The road kind of runs into their front property. Um, and I do know during the winter time, it's pretty tough in there with this town snowplows going by, pushing snow into his property and then him having to clean it up. Um, I, I understand what Casey's getting at, but the more I, I think about it, it, in my opinion, I mean, I just, some of that stuff might be more of a hindrance for everybody. The town, uh, trying to clear the snow and then the property owner trying to get it cleared out too.
It's, it's not an unusual situation on this street. There's a number of properties where there's no defined curb cuts. Um, it's sort of all...
Down further, yeah, down further towards, uh, the industrial room. So, is, anybody else got any questions? Casey, would you be okay with planters around the side of the building? Or do you, you thinking we want to do some more? And then also cleaning up in front of 11?
I think there's room for some, I, I mean, again, it's, it's up to the, and this does sort of go back to, we want to remember here, we're applying for a variance. Is there a hardship in the land? And then what could be done to sort of mitigate anything that you might allow based on that hardship? Um, so you can require, um, you know, you can get pretty specific in terms of your requirements. So, I think in front of 11, um, there might be some more room for do, you know, creating a little green again and kind of, um, at least putting, you know, addressing some landscaping in that area. And I, I mean, I, I think there's some room to do a few, like maybe bookend some islands or stick one or two islands kind of in a couple spots. But, um, I, I, obviously, it's up to the board what you're going to require. I, and I guess I would like to see what the, what the applicant could propose. I think what you're looking at sort of a flat, you're looking at sort of a flat proposing to do nothing. I, I don't think there, I mean, honestly, I, I don't think there's a hardship that prevents them from having any landscaping on the property. So, I guess I'd be interested to see what the applicant was willing to propose.
So, okay, has anybody else got any? Ms. Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you had, I believe before you had said that, uh, when Penn Highway became, um, a town road, they took some of the, the property. Was that correct?
Well, yes, typically, when the town wants a road, they try to establish of a certain width. So, that each of the property owners had to give up whatever rights they had to the entire road because it was basically an easement. Um, but I believe in addition, the town established the road, uh, street line, if I can say that. And so, in addition to giving up your, the rights to the private use of that road, they would have deeded any ownership rights on the inside of, between the two street lines, if I can put it like that.
Okay.
I don't know if I've made sense, but...
Yeah, I think, I think so. Um, so, I mean, I think, I, I don't know if that's, that's necessarily a hardship with the land, but I would think if, you know, if that hadn't happened and the property remained as it was, that would have given some more room for, um, you know, for some landscaping to, to be there. Uh, then again, it wouldn't be a, that wouldn't be the front yard either if there were, if the road weren't there. But, um, so it's, it's a tricky situation. I think it's, there's not a lot of room to do a lot. Um, and, and again, I think there might be a little bit of a, a maintenance issue. I mean, we're not going to get what the regulations are, what the intent of the regulations are, which would be a, a large landscape front yard. So, um, if we do require some islands, um, I would, my concern would also be then that the same thing would happen that, um, others have said maybe happened near 11 where there's, it's a maintenance issue, um, or the plowing becomes an issue if there's islands. Um, so I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to, to some planters around the building or islands or anything. Uh, but again, I, I don't think we're gonna create what, what the, uh, regulations are really seeking to create here. So, throwing in a few islands, uh, if they're not maintained properly, I don't know if that really adds to the, uh, the curb repeal, if you, if you will, of the property. So, um, those are just my thoughts, but thank you.
So, anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Carmody?
So, does the applicant, I mean, are they opposed to doing planters along the side of the building?
Well, I didn't ask that specific question. Um, I, I don't want you to misunderstand this when I say what the applicant wants is what we've proposed. Um, he thinks that works best for the business operation that he has been running all these years. Um, the addition is, again, um, for vehicle storage. Um, and, um, I, I agree with, uh, Board Member Tada. When these really small islands, do they really function the way we hope that they will? It's, it's one thing when you're going in and doing a complete rehab of a property and you can create a 25-foot strip, you know, you've got a much better chance of having it be effective. Um, certainly, you know, it's, it's a problem. And there isn't a lot of landscaping along Penn Highway because it was developed before the focus was on, you know, making sure we got landscaping. And again, because a lot of that development was done prior to, um, it becoming a public road and it's an industrial area. So, it wasn't as much of a concern or a thought as it is now. So, I, I mean, again, if the board tells me to go back and talk to the client, I will do that. Um, but, I mean, from a practical point of view, um, you know, they have a lot of, um, they do a lot of repair work. So, they get, you know, cars that are damaged in accidents and those types of stuff. So, who drives up? They get the insurance agent who's driving up, who's trying to take a look at the vehicle to appraise it, I'm not sure, or assess it, to determine what they're gonna repair for. And then it goes in the back and then they fix it and then it leaves. So, you know. And if you've got, I'm presuming some of these vehicles come in by wreckers, you know, you got, so...
I, I'm gonna speak for myself. I think, um, possibly, we could, just throwing this out there, continue this and, uh, maybe you could sit down with the town planner and see if you can work something out with 11 and maybe something, get creative in front of 17. Um, like I still, I, I'm, you know, I, I'd like to see what you could come up with. I do know, I do understand the property's flat. It is close to the road. Um, I don't know exactly how good islands would be, but, um, maybe, um, the town planner has some ideas better than I do. I would, that wouldn't surprise me anyways. But, uh, but, um, anyway, so that's my suggestion. Uh, anybody else got any? Casey, would that satisfy you to be able to work something out? Joan, that'd be all right?
We'll make our best efforts to see if we can come up with something. It, it, it maybe will come in with something that may, may or may not have Casey's seal of approval, but I will...
Get close.
...back to the client and see whether we can...
Get close.
...at least try and address the concerns.
Is everybody in agreement with that? Can I get a motion for continue this till the October meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue application number 18-025 to the October meeting.
Second.
Motion to continue to the October meeting, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Chairman, one second.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
See you next month. Um, application 18-026 is next up. Um, variance request from Rodriguez for a side yard of 22 feet to construct an addition at 875 North Farms Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks side yard of 22 feet where 23.6 feet exists and 30 feet is required to construct a 9-foot by 21-foot addition to dwelling in an RU-40 district. Parcel predates the inception of zoning and is currently legally non-conforming as the dwelling was built oriented within the current setbacks on both sides of the property. The additional setback being requested for one side yard is only applicable to the southeast front corner of the residence as it is oriented diagonally on the parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Carlos Rodriguez, 875 North Farms Road.
Could you, go ahead.
That's my brother.
Okay. Could you explain your application?
Um, uh, I'd like to do a roughly 200-square-foot addition to the front of my house.
Could you pull the microphone closer to you?
I apologize. Um, I'm asking for approval to build a, a 200-square-foot addition to the front of my house. There's a jog in the house. The intent is to close that off and square off the front of the house and the roof line, make it even. Um, there's no real construction been done since the house was, was built back in the 50s. It's in need of some repairs and we figure some, we do the repairs, let's bring the house up to current standard. And that 200-square-foot addition would make our living space a little bit bigger.
Okay. And I see that pro, the way the house is set on the property, it's on a different...
Correct.
...jog creating the hardship, um, with the property. Has anybody got any questions? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody here to speak against the application? Do you have anything further to add before I...
No, sir.
...close the public hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for possible discussion and action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we accept this application, 18-026.
Okay, uh, motion to approve application 18-026, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Chairman, Rosick?
Yes, your application's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is, um, 18-027, variance request from Coldstad for a total sign area of 484 square feet to add ACM panels to, to front and side of building at 856 North Colony Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Application is for a total sign area of 484 square... Application is for a total sign area of 484 square feet where maximum 102 square feet is permitted to erect ground and wall signage at eight fifty-six North Colony Road in an RF forty district. Proposed signage includes wall signage that is well beyond what is permitted as constructed of architectural panels that face nearly half the perimeter of the building. Sign permit was issued for the property on August 22nd, 2018 for parcel total signage without these additional architectural panels. This office has suggested to applicant that using paint versus architectural panels would not constitute signage and therefore achieve compliance for the 102 square foot total signage area allotted for the parcel. Since options for compliance exist, this office can discern no hardship associated with granting this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Kevin Kohlstedt. I am the Property Development and Facilities Manager for Enterprise Rent a Car. Uh, the office is at eight Elagrasso Turnpike in Windsor Locks, Connecticut. So just a little history for the board. Um, Enterprise Car Rental has been doing business in town for about 20 years now, um, as a taxpayer and, and a business that's done well here in town. And we will continue to do business in town as well. Um, in, as far as car sales, and that's the building that we're proposing to develop here, uh, we currently have two facilities in Connecticut, one in Milford and one in East Hartford, that have been doing business for about 15 years. And part of our, um, we're going through an expansion right now for car sales and Wallingford is where we landed at eight fifty-six North Colony Road and, and thus I sit before you today. So I'm going to actually stand up and go to the easel here if you don't mind.
No, go ahead. The microphone's right there on the.
Okay, so as stated, the, the building, the current sign stand, uh, allowance is 102 square feet. We are proposing, um, the building sign, which is about 40 square feet, and then a freestanding sign, which is roughly 60 square feet, giving us the total of 100 square feet. As an additional architectural feature of the building, we're proposing an ACM panel which will, um, essentially go across the front. And as Casey, as it was mentioned, it'll go across each side, highlighting the sales area of the building. So I brought some examples, um, up here on top of some locations throughout the country, um, in Georgia, Virginia, and New York, which are on the top three there. Um, it is, that branding or that look is part of our branding for the comp, for the corporation, um, through our TV advertisement, if you've seen our commercials. So it is very important for our branding, for our customers to know where we are. Okay. Uh, there are examples of this up and down Route Five in terms of that type of branding. Um, the Valerio Gas Station, um, Dunkin' Donuts uses awnings for that type of purpose, but also more recently Cumberland Farms has some similar, um, colors and panels like that, which again, it's all for branding and which companies go to great extents to do and promote. Um, so the answer to the question, which was stated in the opening statement, painting versus the ACM panels. So if you look at this building, and here's a rendering or a drawing of the existing building, it's a, it's a ribbed building. It's a metal building with ribbed, um, fronts and you, you can see it again, highlighted in the, what we're proposing. To paint it, you just, there's no way you can draw a nice straight line with that. It just, I mean, you can do it, but it's not going to look right. It's not going to be sharp. It's, it's, it's just, it's not going to be the same. So I think, yes, we could paint it, but it, it's not going to look good. It's not going to be a good presentation for the city or for, or for Enterprise in, in any case. So we are proposing the use of ACM panel, which is going to be a nice, sharp, clean look for this building. Um, and I think it'll be a great looking building, um, not only for Enterprise, but for the town of Wallingford. So, and again, you can see the examples above of similar buildings we've done, you know, across the country, so. That's really all I've got.
My problem with the panels is that increases your total signage and then, um, there's no stopping using that area as more of your signage, if you understand what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
And so, um, I'm in agreement with the planning office that I think the better avenue is for you to paint it and then you wouldn't need the variance.
Is there a way to approve it with exam, I mean, where we could never use it as signage? You know what I mean? I don't know if there's a way to do that.
Well, I mean, you're, you're, you're still going to have the total square footage of signage. That's what we're approving. And I do agree with the office that I, I really think you, you know, because then if we approve the total square footage of signage at 484 square feet, you're wide open to use that front greenery area to add signage to it. And it would still be included in your 484 square feet if you added letters to it or something more advertising.
There's no way to phrase that word. I mean, I'm, I'm not interested in more signage. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we, we disagree on the, what you deem signage. I'll, I'll be upfront with that. And, and most, a lot of towns do, and I, it's your, it's your planning, so I understand. I'm not here to change the way you guys set your zones, up your regulations. I get that. But in many towns, that ACM panel is not considered part of signage and we've seen it across the country in different places. So I, I don't know, and I don't, I don't want you to approve it the way you're saying it. I would rather you just approve it as an ACM panel and, you know, call it a day. I, I, I agree with you because if you do what you're saying, then you're agreeing to that much signage, which I'm not asking for. I don't really want that. I'm just asking for the ACM panel as is, with no lettering and no, no additional signage on it, so.
Um, I mean, you're going to paint the building white, correct? Or you're going to leave it the brown color?
Yeah, the building will be painted, um, beige or, yeah, that.
So I mean, in, really, if you're really, I mean, they have, they, they probably could do that with a decal today. And that wouldn't be a sign.
Yeah.
Okay, see if they did that with a decal? Like a wrap?
Hold on a sec. All right, so your definition for sign is any structure, part thereof, or device or inscription attached thereto, or painted, or represented thereon, which is located upon any land or any building, or on the outside or inside of a window, which displays or includes any numeral, word, model, banner, emblem, insignia, device, trademark, or other representation used as or in the nature of an announcement, advertisement, direction, warning, or designation of any person, firm, group, organization, place, so on and so forth, for enterprise or industry. Um, and including any structure or device built and designed to hold any numeral, word, model, banner, emblem, insignia, device, trademark, or other representation, whether or not it is being used for such purpose. Um, and then there are some, some exceptions in regards to national and political flags and things like that. Um, so technically anything they do would be included because it's part of their sign package, it's part of their advertising package. With the painting, since it was just going to be a color, it was kind of like, okay, since it's just a color, we're, we're going to, you know, we won't count that against the signage. Um, I, you know, I, I kind of think anything beyond that, we're, we're starting to stray in the other direction.
Okay. Thank you. Has anybody got any questions? Mrs. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I was actually going to ask you what the, where the definition of sign was. Um, but that's.
It's a long one.
Pretty extensive, yeah. Um, I think it, in, the only, the issue I have with this, I understand, I'm not really sure that, um, you know, architectural panels really would qualify as a sign, but under that definition, I mean, a lot of stuff that I might not think is a sign would qualify as a sign. Um, but, but I think the issue is that if we approve the variance of 484 square feet, that stays with the land. So, you know, if in 10 years, you know, 50 years, Enterprise leaves, um, that variance for 484 square feet of signage stays with the land. And that's, that's a little bit worrisome because that's, I think, over four times what would be allowed. Um, so again, I don't, I don't know if there's a different. I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's a different way to word it, but, um, to grant a variance for 484 square feet is, seems excessive. Uh, again, I'm not sure that an architectural panel really is a sign, but I don't think this is the place to, to debate that, so I'm not really sure, you know, where, where to go with that. But those are, those are just my thoughts. Did, you can respond? Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with what you just said. I mean, I, um, I don't think ACM panels should be part of the signage, so it's up to the board. I mean, you can, in my opinion, you can approve it with that stipulation that it's ACM and separate it from the signage because I'm not looking, again, I'm not looking to increase the signage on the site. I'm just looking for this ACM panel. So I, I agree to any wording that would get around that, that definition. Like I, I don't have an issue with it. If, if, or even if it was just to my application as well. And again, I don't know if you can do that. That's something different, but, um, we wouldn't be opposed to any, any of those things, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Um, Mr. Rice?
Yeah, the only, the only question I have, these aren't illuminated, right?
No, they're, it's just a, a straight metal panel, that's all it is.
Okay.
You all set, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Swinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, is there a way to, like, reclassify the, the panels as part of a variance or to? I'm just trying to think of, because in the, in the rules, it says that paint is considered signage as well, right? So is there a way to kind of, I guess, make a, um, a provision that it's just for this particular purpose as opposed to if someone was to take it down and put something else up, is my question?
There is a recent Superior Court decision that is very, um, we're actually going to have to re, rewrite a lot of our signage regs. Um, ours actually are, are pretty good compared with a lot of places in terms of compliance with that Superior Court decision, but, um, e- essentially, well, it's very, um, it, it's very, it, it really creates a lot of demarcation in terms of we really can't at all discriminate or differentiate about what's on a sign. So, um, that's, that's sort of the challenge that I'm, that I'm having here. I think that's sort of the challenge we're running into here. Um, I mean, one, two, I guess, two thoughts I would have. One is, is there a way to reduce it? So can you make it less so that you sort of accomplish the insignia or component of what you're trying to, you know, your branding component of what you're trying to do here without having to have it wrap all the way around the building because that's a really wide building? Um, the other, I mean, the other, I guess, thing I would, I would sort of think about is, I, I mean, to me, it's, I think it's kind of clear that it is part of like the branding because otherwise you just wouldn't do it if it was an issue.
Sandy, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, I guess I'll respond to, you know, decreasing it. I mean, I, you know, sure, you could decrease it, but I, I think you still run into the same problem. Let's say you just, let's say you took it off the sides. So you're reducing it by, let's say, 20 feet on each side of the building, 40 feet, but you're, if you still use it as a sign calculation as you're doing, you're still, I don't know, you're still going to be in the 300s in terms of signage. So I, I, I mean, so if it's 400 or 300, I mean, I, I mean, you know what I mean? Still, there's still quite a bit. Um, there is, there is a ratio there, and I will, I will say this. Um, this ban was originally, um, I think, much wider. And because of the, um, fascia on the building, we, we decreased it drastically, um, in accordance because it just, it wouldn't have looked right. It just, it would have been, you know, you could see that, how, how thick that one is and even the one up here and even that one. It, um, the thickness of this, it would just would have been too close to the edges and it would have looked horrible. So we, we really already decreased it a fair amount, so.
Has anybody else got any questions on the board? Okay, so do you have anything further to add? Do you have anything further to add?
No.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Anybody here to speak against the application? Hearing none. You have no further to add? I'm going to, because if you don't, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for possible action.
I'm all set. Thank, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. Um, I'll just state my feelings. I mean, I think 484 square feet for the signage is quite a bit, not knowing what we're going to get in the future, so I, I can't support it. So let's see what everybody else has to say. Mrs. Tata?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. Um, unfortunately, I, I don't have a problem with your specific, uh, what you're doing there, but again, I, I think for us to grant a variance of 484 square feet and then that stays with the property is difficult. Um, but again, I, I don't know that the definition of signage is what you're putting up, so I don't know if there's anywhere else you can go with that, but, uh, but I agree with, with the chairman. I, to put a variance on the property of that much signage is worrisome for the future. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I make a motion that this, uh, application be disapproved.
I'll second that. Okay, motion to deny this application, Mr. Carmody?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzek?
Yes, to deny.
Application denied.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion, accept others 20th minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.